Our chairman Joanna Bellata was unable to attend today, so I'll be filling in for her. Uh, let's begin tonight's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so roll call, we just go through. All right, looks like, uh, as you can see, Matt's here, Ken, Damon, Nathan Lockwood, and Adam, our chairman. As I said, Joanna, uh, not with us tonight, but, uh, will be back soon, no doubt. Um, so, uh, before we get into the meeting agenda here, uh, we'd like to open the floor to any public comment. Okay. All right, well, let's see, it's 6:35, which is in four minutes, we will be taking an A&R for Eric and Stacy Manso of Levin Beachview Road from Ducharme and Dillis. Um, while we're waiting for that, um, we have some minutes to approve.
What are these extra minutes?
Yeah, I didn't receive them.
All hands on the minutes here.
Yeah, a lot of-
I don't think she mailed out.
Yeah, most of them are executive minutes, so they, they're just coming to us now by design.
I was gonna read them here, yeah.
So if you'd like, we can hold off on the executive, we can copy them and send them hard copy to everybody?
I would like that.
Okay, then we just have the meeting minutes from 12:22.
Um, the, the alternative would be we could stay, stay afterwards and engage with them and get them, get them done, uh, at the meeting. But if you want, you prefer to do hard copy and, and take-
Well, I just wanted to read them, that's all. I didn't want to approve them without having looked at them.
Without having read them. Um, why don't we see, see where we're at at the end, and if we have time, we can do it today, and if not-
Sure. I mean, there's only, the, the issue is there's only one copy of each. So for everyone to read it, it's-
It's a serial process.
It's a daisy chain of passing the paper around.
Gotcha.
Are they, are they long?
There's five of them.
No, they're each about a page, but-
Yeah, let's, let's see, let's, let's see, if, if we don't get it done, we'll, uh, we'll distribute and whatnot.
And they've waited this long, so waiting for the next meeting will be-
Won't be a big deal.
The end of the uniform.
Okay, awesome. And, so what's the deal as far as signing this goes? I know we-
Uh, you just have to sign it, just the chair has to initial it.
So I'm-
There needs to be a motion to approve that.
Uh, motion to approve the minutes of 12:22, 2014?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So in the absence of the chair, do I sign it?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, um-
You could take in the new A&R, that's not, I'm sorry, you can sign the A&R you have.
Uh, all right.
Laurel Lane.
Laurel Lane. Okay, um, sorry, I'm trying on their one. Oh, endorse, okay, in black, after endorsing all items come to you. All right, what's, uh-
endorsing an A&R here.
This is the one that was submitted at the last meeting. Uh, it's the, it's the division of two non-conforming lots into three non-conforming lots. Uh, and it is, was, the dimensional variations were approved by the zoning board of appeals. It's over on Laurel Lane on Lake Whalen. Uh, the lot in the rear, which is this strange little finger in the back here, has never had frontage. So what they're doing, just to refresh everybody's memory, is they're taking the front lot, which has two primary uses on it, two single-family homes, they're dividing it into two lots that now have frontage and their own services and all that kind of fun stuff, um, taking a non-conformity and making it more conforming by removing the two primary structures or the two primary uses from the single lot. Uh, and they're pulling some of the land from the rear non-buildable lot, or parcel, I guess is what it would be called now, uh, and combining it with the rear home from the front lot, because it's an area that has always been used and maintained by the residents of that. Uh, so you're now, you'll have two lots and a parcel. Lot one and two will be the house lots, and lot, and then parcel A will be this finger in the back that has an existing structure and has a, uh, deeded right-of-way over-
Right, we, we talked about all this last time, and they fixed the, the deeded right-of-way and so forth for access to that lot. One of the things that I forgot to ask at the last meeting is, these towns, these houses are both on town sewer, but we didn't talk about where the sewer lines were, uh, in relationship to these property lines, and whether or not the sewer lines are actually on the property, or if there has to be some kind of, uh-
My understanding is the-
A right-of-way for maintenance of that line if something happens?
My understanding is the way that the properties were drawn were due to where the utility lines were. Uh, because if you look at the lots and the way that they've divided it, one would generally think logically, the parcel in the back would actually have the frontage on the north side of the lot, because it would be a more, you know, it, it seems to create the lot right in front of it.
Right-of-way was always here, though, right?
Correct, but it's, it's all one family. So it's not as if it's two people. So if you looked at it and were to think about it, one would generally assume that this would go this way, and then this would pull this, and they would just adopt the, the right-of-way, because it can cross multiple parcels. So I think that the idea was they divided it this way to allow for the sewer service, for this to reign on this lot, and the same with this.
I remember them saying that.
So, so that, so, so we know for a fact that the sewer service is underneath the, the lot land.
That is part of their presentation.
Okay.
Do we need a motion to, uh, to approve? It's an A&R. A&R, so we just sign, we're done with it? Okay. Um, is this the location? Yes, it is. Should I date it now? Yes, you should. Okay. It's the 12th.
You wanna just take the top one, you walk and go, to grab it?
Just the way.
Okay.
Uh, it's usually three of the five. Um, what, legally, you could assign one person as a signature, you could require one signature only. Um, some communities have just the chair sign it, uh, some have their professional staff able to sign it. Uh, with A&Rs, it's really just a matter of making sure that it meets the requirements. Uh, it's an administrative process, so bringing it to the board, having it at a public meeting is something some boards and communities feel is important, because they want it to be in the public eye. Others feel that, you know, really, your rules and regs for the subdivision outline what qualifies to get a signature, and if you meet those, one person will sign it.
Gotcha.
Uh, so, I, I'm going to go, I don't know, I haven't seen it, but I'm guessing that you've sent the registry a signature document that says it's three out of five.
Gotcha.
We'll probably see one of those in a couple of months. Because they usually come out for signatures after new members are elected. So that they're every year. Alright, so as, as soon as we're done signing the plan, we will proceed with, uh, with Eric and Stacy Mansu, Levin Beachview Road, and Charme and Dillis.
Let me confirm. Adam, I don't really wanna sign that, I don't have to, do I? No, that three is adequate?
Yeah.
This is a fairly straightforward, this is a lot consolidation plan, which, for the Manso's lot, this whole property in a couple of different pieces, and they want it consolidated for tax purposes and the majority of its wetlands. We did an 81X plan that they reported at the registry, because there's no new lot lines created. The assessor wanted us to come and get a planning board endorsement.
So th- this is all gonna be combined until one?
It's all aligned, just right now, it's several, several different lots.
Don't typically need a planning board endorsement for an 81X.
No, this isn't an 81X, we did one, Carol wouldn't accept it. He said he wanted to see a plan, and he wants my planning board. Don't ask me why, but that's what he requested, so that's what we're doing, so they can take care of this, getting multiple tax bills, multiple homeowners association fees and so forth.
So there, are there, are there any utilities on any of the other lots? No other dwellings?
No, there's a septic system down here, that's it. These are all vacant, all the whole lots are vacant. Here's the wetland line, this is all, all wetland here.
This is all wetlands, too, right? This whole lot is wetlands, very concrete.
And now that they're, once they're combined, if they ever tried to do anything, they tend to come back, or the A&R, the A&R plan is-
Looks like they're shooting themselves in the foot if they intend to do that, because the wet-
Yeah, there's really no intention to do that, and it's still like this-
There's so much wet-
Never say never, but there's so much wetland on there that they really can't do-
It would be difficult, yep.
And this is where their septic is, so that's not a sellable lot anywhere, right?
Right.
Yeah. I'm, I'm fine with it, I'm surprised we have to even approve it, but-
I am too.
Doesn't make any sense.
It looks fine to me, Adam, if you-
I would suggest that you can sign it tonight and send them on the way.
Okay.
Who's got the pen?
I think it's-
Underneath me?
I mean, this is something that, there's no division, it's all property they own. You're actually creating a super-conforming lot, so any utility issues or any of the other things that you currently send to the other boards for review are irrelevant, because a lot of that is based on, we're dividing it, what would the issues be? They're not dividing it, this is essentially, or it's functionally how the property exists today. So they're just formalizing that.
Yeah, we had the board of health form signed, so-
Yeah, it, but-
And even that's a moot point, I understand.
Yeah, because it's not a division. You're, you're adding additional land, so you're increasing your ability to, to replace a, a conforming system.
How many bedrooms is it?
Three.
Just a question, the Lake Association doesn't require any approval?
Any what?
The Lake Association doesn't have to approve anything like this, as far as-
I, I, that would be, wouldn't be anything to do with the board, because it meets the town standards. If they have something that they have to, if they have a legal process they have to deal with, with the Lake Association, that's outside the bounds of this, because that's a private agreement on their ownership and occupancy of the land.
Mm-hmm.
I think that they may have some issues if they were to try and divide, and maybe not this parcel, because it's enormous, but if they had a parcel that they might cut into two, the Lake Association, there may be something that they have to do illegally to clear that in order to convey, but usually it's gonna affect the sale, not the actual division of property.
Not only the sale, they'll be, they'll be able to increase their bedroom count, yeah? enlarge the system, most likely.
No, because they had enough acres before, actually, the lot that, they bought this lot after the fact.
It's probably nitrogen-
So they had, for nitrogen, they had-
Oh, it is, okay.
I mean, they had, you know, two or three acres before they got that open lot. The, the septic system is sized to fit most of the water.
Do the wetlands count for the nitrogen-sensitive area?
You can use that, yeah.
Have you done A&Rs in town? Have you done A&Rs in town before?
Yeah.
Okay, so, I'll send you with the Mylar and that, and so when you get it recorded, just fax that back, or bring that back to the office, that's fine.
You guys have a different process than any other town I've ever been to.
We haven't gotten there yet.
We try to be unique, and we're trying to be less unique.
We don't have to try so hard.
Yes, right.
I'm just gonna leave it here.
It's like, I'm checking what you can just go and say, I got ABCD, especially when you're all, you're all working town.
Makes a lot.
Have you had one signature or all signatures?
Just the one, they just need to be approved by these four.
Would you mind if we-
Do you wanna sign this one? Do you wanna sign this one?
I just didn't like that was a non-conforming, making two be giving it more of a conform-
I understand.
And if you wanna sign it, just to know you read it, it's, it's fine.
So neither of these pertain to me, nor does that. Oh, right, I think one of those, one of those doesn't apply to me either.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
Yeah, you're right.
I think the issue is there's a lot of the, uh, pre-deed members of the board.
Yeah, I think there's only two of them that, that are applicable to me.
I'm gonna take the paper off your hands, too.
That one?
I don't wanna write back a little bit. You know what? Some marginism.
Pretty straightforward minutes.
Yeah, there's really nothing to it.
I don't think you were at this one, but-
All right, there's nothing in the A&R.
Nothing here that, this one doesn't apply to you, I don't think, but it does, oh, so this one they do initial, right?
714 applies to me.
It does?
I believe.
Because you're not on it, so-
I'm not on it. I haven't missed a meeting, so it wasn't you.
I think it was before you.
Yeah, okay. So this, yeah, that's why I know we're, we're just gonna wrap it up.
When you're done with them, just send them on back down this way.
We're gonna sign them before we approve them?
Um, oh, good point.
You've already all done that.
Yeah, we have-
Which is why I-
Oh, that's what, yeah, okay, yeah, yeah, sorry.
I mean, I don't have a problem with it.
Well, that's what I said, I'm gonna sign them until you approve them.
Oh, I didn't, I missed that, okay, gotcha. I thought you said we need to approve them. Ah, that's all right. So this one I have to abstain from, so this is the one I can approve.
She's signing the stickies, see?
Yeah.
Ah, damn it.
Sorry, just give them a chance to read it.
Yeah, 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 no, to take your time.
Bring them all up for the whole of the time.
It's going pretty good here. I remember they teach you in planning school that educating the board is like 60% of your job.
I'll just hold that one. All right, so you go through all those? Okay, so, uh, everyone has reviewed them.
Everyone has reviewed, all right. I just need to finish a couple of them, won't take me long, I don't think. Yeah, that's pretty much the shortest one I've ever seen. Okay, um, we'll take a, a motion to approve, entertain a motion to approve the, uh, executive minutes, uh, each of the executive minutes.
You have to do them by date.
Yeah, no, I understand, whoever makes the motion can do that.
Should we add the 127?
Oh, good question.
You gotta start with the 129.
Okay, sorry.
We need a motion to approve the minutes of 12, 9, 13, executive session.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Epstein?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, now we entertain a motion for January 27th, 2014.
Make a motion to accept the meeting minutes from 127, 14, executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Epstein?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, now we entertain a motion for January 27th, 2014.
Make a motion to accept the meeting minutes from 310, 14, executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Epstein?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, now we entertain a motion for January 27th, 2014.
Make a motion to accept the meeting minutes from 127, 14, executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Epstein?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from 310, 14, executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Epstein?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, motion to approve, oh, sorry, entertain a motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes from 714, 14, executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Epstein?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from 811, 14, executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Epstein?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, so, uh, next we'll move to committee reports. Um, the MRPC report, uh, would be brought to us by Joanna, who's not here. Do you have any update on it or not?
Okay, we'll, we'll get that from her next time, perhaps. Uh, capital planning committee, also from Joanna, any word on that?
Okay.
Uh, school building committee, um, I don't believe there's been a meeting since our last meeting, so I have nothing to report on that at the moment. Uh, Adam did send us, I didn't have a chance to look at it yet, I think it came out today or something?
Uh, I got it Thursday afternoon, late Thursday afternoon.
Late Thursday, no, no, no worries, I'm just saying, I, I just can't tell you much about it.
Oh, sure.
New boundaries for the, uh-
They're the proposed sketch boundary that was submitted at the school committee last Wednesday. Uh, I was not in attendance, but, uh, it essentially just shows two parcels, uh, one for the Brooks House, one for TC Passios, uh, and a potential realignment of Memorial Drive that would formalize it into a, a roadway.
Yeah, Mike Mackin actually presented this at our building reuse committee meeting. Um, really what it was, is they had their landscape architect go through our zoning and make a minimum size lot possible by zoning, as he believes.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that's really all, there's no further analysis into it than that. I also attended the school committee meeting to express my personal, uh, concern for the value of the Passios property to the future of the town center. And, um, kind of stressed my thought that we should have a, you know, joint meeting. I think that's something that's been talked about between us and them, and maybe the building reuse, whoever, to talk about what's going on there. Um, I know several members, members of the school board expressed a desire to keep the property size to a minimum and maximize what they retain for the school parcel itself. Um, but they, at the same time, realize there's gonna be a conversation about that between the boards, this is just a starting place. Um, myself, I did, uh, kind of a little evaluation of the site, and just looked at our zoning, the square footage of the building, what kind of parking requirements, you know, would be needed for, to fit out a space that size per different use. And, um, just the site layout, layout itself, I kind of have a strong feeling that we need to configure that parcel in a way that gets parking on the north side of the building. Um, on that sheet, that'd be the left side sheet. Uh, just as far as access around multiple sides of the building, uh, if it weren't one tenant taking up all 53,000 square feet, which I doubt it would be, um, it'd be good to get access to different points of the building. Um, and just by parking count, going through our new parking that we talked about for the village district, as far as parking per square footage by use, I mean, if it were anything besides another school use, or maybe a housing use, then you would definitely be required more just square footage of land to put parking on, to make it even feasible to reuse that building. And, uh, I think, I had Adam send along this little sketch that I had done to show dimensions for parking and kind of how far that setback should be from the north side of the building. And, uh, given that it's really not good to have dead-end parking, especially that big of a dead-end, because we really have no access around the building, because they didn't have a desire to, uh, share that through driveway, that's gonna be just a driveway for the school, you don't wanna be adding traffic to that. So all the traffic that, or people-
Why are they taking that? Because they wanna keep this for parking lot, potentially.
So any load that that site is gonna get is going to be wrapped around the building and need to, you know, kind of turn around and come back, and a dead-end, so you really wanna have a two corridor parking setup back there, which kind of warrants 150 feet of space about, that's what that sketch was that I, I sent along. Um, so that's what I'm gonna push for in that conversation, but I just, I think it'd be good for us as a planning board to think about the planning implications of that lot and make recommendations in that way.
So thanks, Damon, so you, so this, the, so first of all, that seems like, you know, really valuable analysis. You're saying you had that conversation, you, you told, you talked to the school committee of-
Yeah, I expressed my own, my personal concern, I wasn't representing the board or anything, but, again, something that we all should sit down and talk about.
Well, whether, yeah, I mean, it seems like, um, if, if, you know, is the school building reuse committee has proposed some sort, you know, marketing that site for reuse, and the things you described seem like they'd be major considerations in, you know, marketing the site, like if you can't meet the program requirements for parking and the traffic requirements related to it, that's gonna make the parcel probably pretty hard to, um-
Yeah.
Potentially difficult.
It's almost a preliminary site plan review from our standpoint of, say, something came with any use, and how would that end up working?
Yeah, what, what could you use it for? Without any parking, what, what really-
Without any parking, or with that square footage allowable, it'd be the minimum parking requirement, which would be, if a charter school wanted it or something, which is, you know, shooting for the stars, but that would only be, what, two parking spaces per classroom.
So have we done the analysis to be sure that the required parking for the existing building is available? I mean, the space to put it in there?
I, during my lunch breaks at work, I started sketching it. I believe if we added that 150 feet to the north side, then it'd be more than feasible to get, yeah. And that sketch is kind of a little deceiving, because it doesn't show the whole property, the school owns much, much more property to the north that you can't see on that sheet.
Right.
Also, this is, this is 20,000, 200,000 square feet, which is just under five acres, which is still less than 10% of the existing school lot.
Yeah.
So add a $10 million budget for the law.
Yeah. And when we, when we wanna sit down and talk about this more as a real meeting point, um, I, I can bring in some sketches of what I think a real, what it would really take to make a parking layout work there.
So, so are we setting up some kind of meeting with, uh, with the school building committee or the school committee? Do, so you think that this, the planning board needs to be involved in that conversation with the school committee and the school building committee?
I think, yeah, as far as the site layout and the property extends, the building reuse is yet, their, their desire is to make the property as valuable as possible to get the most return for the town. The way that's gonna happen is making sure that it meets planning hurdles, to ensure that it can accommodate the uses that we are looking for, can accommodate the parking that goes along with it. And it's really, I think, I mean, the building reuse yet, might wanna have a say in it, but I think really when it comes down to what the site can accommodate, where the board that is gonna be deciding what the site can accommodate.
Hmm, okay. Well, I, I have contacted the superintendent and the town manager about the request made at the last meeting to have a joint meeting. Um, they were both gonna speak with their chairs. Uh, my understanding was that the decision and scheduling of that was going to be put off until after the school committee had their discussion last Wednesday, because they had already had it on the agenda, uh, and see sort of what was proposed. Uh, so I will circle back around with both-
I will circle back around with both, Loxie and Carrie, and see where, where that, that stands.
And even if for some reason they don't wanna have a joint meeting, if we can just schedule it on our agenda, do, make an official recommendation?
And, you know, and all of this is anticipating that the building remains standing, or that somebody who's going to use the site is gonna look to use the entire building and not do any, any demo or alteration.
Yeah, and I think...
And, and I think that's a reasonable assumption, because there's no set aside funds for demolition right now.
Yep, there's, yeah, there is not. And I think just for other reasons, uh, as far as making the site more valuable, if the, whoever's coming in to invest in the property doesn't have to demolish it, there's clearly a higher property value. Um, there's also some little bit of sentimental value to the building, it's been around in town since 50s, and, uh, it's been stable. I mean, it's, I don't think it meets historical qualifications by age of the building, but as far as, pretty much everyone who grew up in this town spent their childhood in the building, I think it has some historic merit to itself there. So that'd be another reason to see it reused, repurposed, to me. And, uh, as far as just what the people of the town center would accept on that parcel, I'm sure they'd be more comfortable with a building that's already there repurposed than not knowing what would happen if we're torn down and something else built there, just another comfort level of, of value of having that building be feasible to use.
Okay, any, any other discussion on that topic? Alright, so it sounds like we'll hear, hear, uh, next meeting regarding the scheduling of the, the joint meeting. Thanks a lot for the update on that, and that's, uh, really valuable analysis. Um, okay, uh, I think that's it for the school building committee. Uh, open space ad hoc committee. So, uh, there was, this wasn't executive session stuff, the lane?
No, that was open meeting.
That was open. So there was a meeting of, in, did you attend?
I did not, the con and com meeting?
Yeah, the con...
No, Wednesdays are tough for me with them.
Okay, okay. So there was, I think last Wednesday, there was a meeting, um, of members of a special committee regarding the lane property, and I think it was to discuss, um, some...
Parking requirements.
It was what they were obligated to do as part of the grant award by the state.
Right.
What the obligations were, where they were going with it, and how they were going to carry it out.
Right, and how to transfer it.
Correct.
Uh, I don't have any information on the outcome, I didn't attend. The people, I think representing us still is, um, I think Toby Bicasa may represent us as well as, as you, uh, on, on that at this point. I don't know if Joanna attends that.
I was at the meeting.
Oh, you were? Okay, great.
Yeah, so, I mean, they, they really did just cover the, uh, what had to be done, uh, in order to, uh, to close the property. Um, the, the big thing is that, uh, they have to establish the parking area, uh, prior to May 15th. Uh, mo, a lot of it is just planning stuff, which is relatively straightforward, but they actually have to do some physical work on the site, uh, to establish a, an, an intended park, a, a usable and intended parking place, uh, for access in order for that to go through. Uh, and that has to be done by May 15th. Uh, so that doesn't give us a tremendous amount of time, uh, to do it once spring comes, so that, that work will have to be started relatively early. I understand, uh, Paula Bertram is gonna look at, uh, getting a, um, a potential of a grant, uh, to help fund some of this work. I don't know if you wanted to comment on it, Paula?
Hi, I'm on the open space acquisition advisory team, that's a mouthful. Um, but Brandon and I are both on that group. The Lunenburg Snow Riders has been very, very successful in obtaining RTP grants. We've actually obtained two grants, one in 2011 and one in 2013. That program is still open, and it's up to $50,000 with matching funds. Um, typically in the past, the Snow Riders have done matching funds with both materials and services, and in fact, we've donated over 800 hours under just those two grants, um, of trail work and, and building bridges and working with the conservation commission. So we're actually on their agenda, um, next Wednesday with the conservation commission to pursue applica, uh, the application. And hopefully we'll be successful, and that will help us, uh, with some, a lot of the work that has to be done. There's five foot bridges that have to be done, there's a larger bridge over the Mulpis, um, the parking lots that Ken mentioned. What we're, because of the cost of the parking lot, the cost, the cost of the parking lot is over $27,000, based on quotes that we had gotten before. We were working with the conservation commission on coming up with a plan for that parking lot. Um, and because of the cost associated with it, obviously it makes sense to pursue grant opportunities. And we're looking at other grants as well, as, such as Fields Pond, um, Brandon and myself. So, we're looking at opportunities on how to offset the cost of this, of, of improving this parcel. One of the things we're gonna talk about with the state is whether or not improving the handicap parking lot will be sufficient for public access, at least until we, if we're awarded the grant, then we'll have the funds to do the main parking lot. So there's a lot of stuff in the works.
Thanks, that sounds great. Alright, that's, uh, that's great news. Um, Damon, uh, anything else from the building reuse committee?
Yeah, um, Jamie Toll went up with, uh, public access, uh, cable to check out the old primary building, so I think they'll be making a tour of that available at some point, so we can really better understand the condition of that building and the possible reuses of it. Um, and, yeah, we talked about the school boundary, and, um, I think those were the highlights of our meeting.
Excellent. Okay, uh, M, anything, anything else, or you...
Meeting's 20th, oh, sorry.
Yep, yeah. Alright, thanks Damon, that sounds great. Um, MJTC, Ken?
Next meeting's 21st.
Alright, that was a great update. Uh, Matt, ag com?
Next meeting is this Thursday on the 15th.
Very good, thank you. Alright, um, with that, we will turn to new business and development status reports, and for Whitetail Crossing, we have a verbal update.
The, uh, layout hearing for the roadway is tomorrow night in front of the Board of Selectmen. Uh, that's the, it's the first actual step towards acceptance. Uh, the planning board submitted their report, uh, and then that's the first formal step. Uh, if the layout is accepted, it becomes a warrant article, and then it's on the town meeting warrant for acceptance as a public way.
Okay, anything else on Whitetail?
Nope.
Thank you. Uh, Whites Woods has no report?
Nope.
Highfield Village, no report. And definitive subdivision at 50 Elmwood Road has a verbal update?
They have been installing drainage and, uh, utility lines over the past month or so. Uh, I believe that they're essentially wrapped up with stormwater and, uh, domestic water, uh, both the mains and the services, and they're in the process of putting this upgrade in.
I have a question on that. Um, I remember there were two storm scepters on that, and the town does not have a vacuum truck. Is that, is that intended to stay with that subdivision? They're, they're probably gonna be looking for the town to accept it?
They are.
So are we going to get a vacuum truck to be able to maintain those?
I can't speak to that, because that was, that would be an operational thing with the DPW. Uh, there are, I don't know if there are other storm scepters in town, there are contractors who own vacuum trucks and do that work, so if, if they're already installed, which I would believe that they are, because they're on the approved plan, the DPW could contract for that cleaning.
Okay, that makes sense.
Okay, uh, Trittown Landing has no report. Uh, middle school, high school project, um, no report beyond what we talked about?
Exactly.
And, uh, Emerald Place at Lake Whalem, no report, and Force Corp, no report.
That's correct.
And that brings us to the action file.
Everybody's favorite.
Getting down to action here. Uh, housing production plan, we got a board vote on that. Um, so, uh...
So I did send around a copy of the finalized plan, uh, addressing the comments that were submitted, uh, by Ms. Bertram and the Board of Selectmen. Uh, the board wanted to review the plan, uh, prior to making a formal vote. Uh, I believe it was forwarded out, uh, the day after, if not, uh, the following day to the board from our last meeting. Uh, so hopefully, between your merry-making, you had time to review the fun and exciting housing production plan. Now has pagination and index and all the things you'd expect a final document to have. And I did send around the document that, um, Sam didn't really track changes, he more noted where, he discussed the items.
Alright, you had to go digging for them.
So the, yeah, and then you had to dig for them. The actual verbiage wa, wasn't as easy to pull out, but he did at least, he gave you a ballpark.
Alright, um...
I mean, when I reviewed it, it looked like all of the comments were addressed, so...
Alright, so, uh, we need to, we, uh, you know, I had this, yeah, I, I'm straddling, it's just a personal thing, it's, uh, don't worry about it. I'm personally related to this, but personal to my processing of the emails. Um, so I, I guess, any discussion of the updated housing production plan, uh, before we enter, before we take a motion to vote on it?
Well, just, what is the next steps, uh, after this?
We submit it to the state for formal review. They go through and do their stady magic on it, and, uh, they have 90 days from their acceptance of the plan, when they actually receive it, to approve it, uh, and then we have an approved plan and we go forward.
Okay.
Then after 12 months, we can submit to them for compliance.
Okay. And, uh, yeah, so, um, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the housing, the final draft of the housing production plan. So moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you much.
No signatures required on that one? Okay. And thanks to everyone who, uh, participated in that, and, uh, especially to those, uh, not on the planning board who took time to carefully review it and provide suggestions. That's a nice, nice accomplishment. Alright, so, um, I'll tell you what, I want, if it's okay, I would like to go through the other items and come back to... So I'm, we have village district bylaw continued discussion, which is, uh, obviously a key item. I'm just gonna, if it's okay with everyone on the board, like, make that our, our last item, uh, of this section. So, uh, there's a verbal update on 322 Flathill Community Solar.
The applicant still has not picked up the final decision for recording with the registry of deeds, but it's extended past its appeal period, so there's no opportunity for appeal.
Any discussion there?
That, that's kinda a repeat, right?
Yeah, yeah. It's still sitting on the desk waiting for him to come in and...
So, it was, the last meeting was past the period for appeal.
Can we retire that item from the action file at this point?
I'd like to retire a lot of items from the action files, but that's a conversation we can have offline. Yes, we can take it off.
I mean, that one, this one has no action page.
There's nothing left to update.
As to some of the other ones.
Okay, uh, well, and if you have any other suggestions while we're here, we can certainly entertain that.
I'll tell you what, I'll take them off for next time and see if anyone notices.
No, 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 no.
Uh, I would say Force Corp.
Oh, yeah, let's definitely. Uh, does anyone have any objection to removing that from the action file?
Nope.
Kinda yesterday's news.
Yeah, that's not coming anywhere. Um, well, Force Corp is in the nude, oh, so you're talking the new business development... Yeah, I mean, that, there's a lot of different things on it that could, that could come down. I mean, Whites Woods can come off. Actually, no, it probably shouldn't. Whitetail Crossing can come off.
Okay.
Uh, I guess that's it for right now. It has been trimmed down a bit. Housing production will come off the next time around. Is it done with acting on that?
Alright, very good. Okay, so that was, uh, Flathill Community Solar?
Mm-hmm.
Alright, so, uh, Scenic Road, Flathill and Northfield Road, just, you know, that's still, we got a calendar, we're not at the spot, the calendar where we do anything, so we'll wait till that gets hot again. Uh, 250 Whalem Road, Whalem Luxury Apartments, no report there?
No, I believe they're still finalizing their agreements.
Gotcha. Uh, master planning economic development element, no report there.
It's still in process. Because of what it is, it's a longer term thing, so other things pop up and that kinda gets shuffled aside. It's, it's something I hope to do in February.
Okay, that's great. Um, any update from the selectmen in terms of the timetable for forming the economic development? Do you have a sense, like, are they waiting for a town meeting to clear, or...
You know, I, I haven't spoken with the selectmen. Uh, I believe Carrie and I have talked about it once or twice, uh, and I think that there's a lot of other things moving. I think that the selectmen, and I'm not gonna speak for them, but my understanding is that they're in favor of it happening, um, and it's just a matter of, of creating it and, and doing it. And I don't know what the process is for that, based on the charter, um, but I will get a report for that the next time.
Okay, yeah, I mean, just thinking about it, obviously it's a really important thing, but I can understand maybe waiting to town meeting, like, I don't know. But, anyway, just, just kinda wanna keep on top of that. I think, I think it definitely should happen soon. My personal opinion is, I'd like to see it happen no later than very shortly after town meeting. I don't know if the selectmen have anyone up. I think we have two board members' seats that are up for election again, and whatever, but when things, uh, settle in May, it'd be great to get that seated.
Sure.
Uh, historical commission, verbal update on the architectural preservation district?
Uh, I have a markup from the historical commission on what they'd like to see, uh, in the APD. They would like to come to the next meeting, uh, and discuss a draft with the planning board. Uh, so, probably by the end of this week, I'll have something to send around for everybody to sort of look at. Uh, I went over it with, uh, Amory Phelps, and she sort of walked me through what the commission had done. Uh, I have a different opinion than they do on some things, uh, and I, I assume that this board may have some other input, so I think it would be sort of a working session, almost a joint meeting between the planning board and, and the historical commission to, to go over that.
That sounds great, and, so, any, any questions, comments?
So we're just, we're adding that to the January 26th meeting?
Correct.
Okay.
Anything else on that topic? Okay, great. Um, alright, I, if it's okay, I'd actually like to skip through and do notices and communications and then come back to village district. Um, so, uh, notices and communications, library board of trustees meeting on January 15th, email scan to board members. And that's regarding the, um...
Village District, uh, amongst other things. Uh, Joanna was invited by the library board of trustees, uh, to speak to them sort of about the village district, how it might impact the library. Excuse me.
Sure.
After our last meeting, um, Damon and I had a short conversation with one of the trustees. Uh, I think that there's a lot of programmatic things that they wanna do, uh, and I think that they're looking for how that fits in with the village district. So I think that there's some discussion about what the creation of the district is and what it does, and, you know, what the, the impact of those programmatic things might be. Uh, it's sort of two conversations.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but I think it'll be, it'll be a helpful thing, uh, for, for us to know what they're kind of looking to do, but also for them to understand how they fit in.
Are you gonna make it to that meeting?
I am.
Any other thoughts on that? Okay, sounds good. Alright, um, and, uh, the last item in notice and communications is a ZBA denial for 790 Mass Ave, the proposed gas station filed with the town clerk. So I guess the denial was filed with the town clerk?
That's it.
And that is it for that? Alright. Um, and so we're gonna do village district in just a second. Before we get into that, uh, is it okay to take public comment on the items so far? Cause we may, I don't know how long we're gonna be in this.
Sure.
Any public comment on any topics before we enter our discussion on the village district bylaw? Please, uh, come on up.
I just have a clarification on Whitetail's Crossing. Um, you guys had voted at the last meeting to accept or to recommend the roadway with a couple of contingencies, and the two contingencies I thought were the paving of a driveway and looming and seating. Is that, so that is correct. And then you're gonna review it prior to town meeting, ensure that those items have been addressed satisfactorily, and then make a recommendation at town, a formal, final recommendation at town meeting, or how do you... Or how do you propose to work that?
Well, the planning board is the proponent of that warrant article.
Okay.
When a subdivision roadway goes for acceptance, the planning board becomes the proponent. So if the planning board feels that their items weren't completed, as the proponent, they can withdraw the article. Or they could propose the, not the withdrawal, the, no, I'm trying to, when you kill it, I can't think of it. No.
Passover?
Passover or, yeah, I guess passover, there's another word that's escaping me.
Okay.
But they would essentially pull the article.
Okay.
And they would, as the, as the sponsor, they would say, we don't think that this is appropriate.
Okay, so tomorrow night, the Board of Slight Meeting laying out the voting to lay out the road.
Correct.
But then you, you guys will get back to us as to whether or not all of your contentions have been.
Correct.
Accepted.
And the layout is just saying that the meets and bounds of the right of way is what you accept, is what you'll look to accept as the actual right of way.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to understand where you guys are, because I know there were a couple contingencies. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment before, please, come on up.
Hi, Mary Ellen Ramstack at 44 Cortland Circle. Just a couple of things I want clarified. The scenic roads on Northview and Flat Hill, these are, I was told that they're going to warrant, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so it is a done, there's nothing else we need to do about it?
No, I don't believe so. I mean, I, I think that the chair had wanted to make some notification to everybody who lives on those roads. I'm not sure what her vehicle for doing such was, but it doesn't alter anybody's property rights, and it's a simple warrant article.
Right.
So the planning board has proposed it, if I'm not mistaken, and would be the sponsor of the article.
I thought we said we were just going to socialize it a little bit because we're coming up to the election, but, but that's why we're tabling it from meeting to meeting until then.
Well, that's what I don't understand. It's been tabled, I don't understand what that means.
It's too early to socialize it.
Socialize in what manner then?
Just to get people aware of it and what the intent of it is and what it all means. If we, if we did that now, people, it wouldn't be in the forefront of people's minds by the time they come around to vote. So we try to schedule those things on a calendar such that it's fresh in people's minds when it comes up, they, they are familiar with it and what it means, so that there's not a lot of question about it.
Okay, and when, when would you plan to do that?
What was the date that we said we were going to start doing that?
I believe you said early March.
Early March, yeah.
Okay, and then again, 322 Flat Hill, that is an issue that's no longer going to be on the agenda because it's passed its appeal process, is that correct?
Correct. I mean, the, the decision has not been recorded, but where it was a denial, it doesn't have a, an effect. If you don't record the decision in an approval, it doesn't become active until it's recorded with the registry of deeds legally. There's a lot of towns and places where decisions might not get recorded and people just act on them, and everybody kind of, although it's technically illegal and it doesn't technically put the approval into play, everybody understands that it was approved and they just kind of say, whatever. It's a, it's a technical issue, not a full issue, but where it's a denial, it's a denial, it's on record as a denial. He should record it. If he doesn't record it, it doesn't change anything.
Who records it?
The applicant.
Okay, I see, okay.
So I, you know, most applicants who are denied don't want to then go and spend another $75 to legally formalize the fact that they were denied.
I see.
But it doesn't change, it doesn't change the long-term effect of the denial.
Okay, all right, thank you very much for the clarifications.
Thank you, and just if I may, before you step down, regarding the, you know, regarding the socializing and the meeting, I think, how, what was the structure that, it's not a public hearing, but it's just a, we're going to have a, what part of the public discussion at one of our meetings, how would you term that?
I mean, I guess.
I didn't recall saying that we were going to do any kind of mailing on it, that's why.
Yeah.
We're just going to talk about it.
And I think that that's more what it was, was just a discussion of the scenic road at meetings, and it's a discussion.
Yeah, okay.
And sort of just an informational, this is what it is, this is what it does.
Gotcha.
Sort of just running it over a couple of times at a couple of different meetings.
Okay, yeah, I mean, so it sounds like it'll be a specific item on our agenda.
Correct.
To discuss. And I believe, I mean, forgive me if I'm mistaken, but you're involved in some capacity with a historical committee?
I have been, yes.
And, yeah, and I believe you wrote a really informative piece about, about Flat Hill. If, you know, if there's, if you, you know, if the board, you know, we, if the historical committee was interested in, you know, formally attending those meetings and maybe doing a brief presentation regarding those roadways, and if they support the scenic road bylaw, and we would like to speak to it, you know, you're more than welcome to, we could, you know, talk to you about working something like that out.
I just don't want it to get lost, because I think it's important that these two roads are declared scenic, and I didn't know the process, and so we really want to make sure it's, we go through it properly.
Absolutely, no, I appreciate that. And so just, you know, because we're trying to keep these things in the forefront of our minds, that's, we're keeping this action file for things that we're not all done with.
We'll make sure it doesn't take it off the action file.
Exactly.
All right, well, thank you very much.
All right, well, that, any other public comment before we move to our village district bylaw discussion? All right, well, we're going to dig into the village district bylaw discussion then. So continued discussion, so we had a couple, our last meeting, I believe, before the break, we had a very substantive review of the latest draft and made some, some, you know, had some good discussions, which Adam has captured in a more recent draft, which was sent to us to review. So I guess I'm willing to entertain what people would like on this agenda item tonight. I would like to discuss, any comments anyone has about the latest draft?
Yeah, I have a question. I might have misunderstood something, but when we talked about the street furniture, I thought we were referring to that in reference to a long walk to the front of the structure, and it seems like the way that we incorporated into the dimensional requirements, it was just the opposite of what I thought, so.
So I was trying to figure out how the street furniture applies to the minimum front setback of five feet.
No, I, I did it backwards.
Okay.
It should be under the maximum, not the minimum.
Okay, so maybe.
I made the note on the, on the wrong line.
Maybe we could fix that. But other than that, the review of all the updates looked pretty good to me. I don't think I put any more notes in here. Oh, there was a typo too in the preamble, just spelling on demonstrates. Oh, wait, oh, this is a different version than.
Oh, yeah, I went through and cleaned up my typos.
Oh.
I was more interested in getting the substance out to you guys than I, I didn't get my second read through.
So the hard copy is different than the one we reviewed for the meeting, huh?
Different in that I got my typos.
Okay, so just spelling issues?
Mostly just spelling issues, yeah.
Mostly, is there other things?
There was, I think that I hadn't changed the 10 to a 5 in the brackets down in C, which was an original edit that for some reason kept escaping me as I went through it. One of those things where you, where you keep seeing what you want to see.
Yep. Okay, and that's the only, that's it?
I believe so, because it, again, I, you know, it's a continued markup. I hadn't accepted the changes that I had made previous, so if something was changed, it's, again, something that was supposed to be changed or was a, an edit, spelling edit,
For the most part, it looks the same. Okay, so what do we do next?
Oh, does anyone else have any, any comments?
No, I think we hammered it out pretty thoroughly last meeting, and the meeting before that, and the meeting before that, so I'm ready for the next steps in my mind.
I think this is draft six, is it not?
Yes. Well, that's all going to be irrelevant, because next it'll just be draft.
Okay, I have a few comments. I mean, I think, I agree that we, we did a great job hammering it out. They're kind of, some things that were rattling around my mind after the last thing. Before I get into those comments, let's talk about next steps. Next step is.
Next step would be putting it on the agenda for a comment discussion from the public. We could schedule and advertise a public hearing, but you get into, I mean, we can do that if you would like, and we can schedule the public, the formal public hearing. If I'm not mistaken, the warrant closes March 23rd, so the public hearing has got to happen before then, and there needs to be a final draft of the bylaw before then, because my understanding is that without a final product, items won't be placed on the warrant this year. So.
Yeah. I was just saying, what, in between those two things, we had talked about doing some kind of a vision mock-up, some kind of a visual type thing. There was some good feedback that we got about if we had some kind of pictures of the types of things that would comply with the bylaw, things that wouldn't comply with the bylaw, maybe even things, if we could find them, things that would be undesirable that would comply with the bylaw. How would we go about doing that?
So good news is, I suspect that, now, although it was less village center focused, so, so we might be able to pull something together with some specific things from the village center, some sort of iconic architecture from the center. Chantel is a member of MRPC, did put together a sort of, a visual guide, set of guidelines to, is a companion to our design bylaw, our current design bylaw governing commercial districts. And I suspect a lot of that would apply, because although we have made some significant, some, you know, alterations, I think a lot of the, the stuff in the visual guidelines.
But is that, that's just the textual visual guidelines?
No, there's pictures.
Oh, there are pictures.
Describing, you know, what, you know, roof, what kind of roof lines are desirable. And I don't know if she has like the antique guide, anti, you know, counterexamples in there of what not to put, but.
Yeah, we almost want like an artist's rendition of what the village district could look like type of thing, you know?
Oh, and that's.
Obviously, we don't have a budget to do that.
That's where you run into the issue, is ideally, we go and see some sort of architectural draftsman or something like that, and have them produce a, you know, that happy sketch with the, the faceless people with the stick arms, and everybody would say, ooh and ah, and look at the, you know, the trees and say, it looks great.
I heard when they were interviewing you, they said you were quite an artist, so.
I can draw the stick arms.
Watercolors specifically.
I've got that down. We could, you know, some of what we could do is we could use examples of other communities. The danger with that is their bylaws, their process is not going to be our bylaw and our process, so we're more showing a concept of this is a functional cohesive village district or this is not. And it can be interpreted as poor taste, because if you slag a community, let's say you grab someone that just, they've got a rough time of their zoning and, you know, their downtown looks a little busted, and somebody's from there, their family lives there, people get a bad taste in them.
No, I wouldn't do that, so I think that, I was thinking more along the lines of the artist rendition, you know, you're talking about the nameless, faceless.
Yeah.
People on there. But if we do have some, some rough, or we do have some pictures of the style guy, I mean, that at least would help.
I'd be interested to see that, I haven't seen that one.
Yeah, no, I, she definitely had it, I can try to dig it.
I haven't seen it, but I can certainly contact her, or I can have, see if Marjorie knows where it might be.
Yeah, and I'm sure I have it in my, you know, electronic files, but I just would need to, I'm pretty sure I would need to.
Well, look, throw them in, you know, see, see where, if you can find it and send it along and I'll distribute it.
Okay, and feel free to talk to Chantel as well, but I will, I will take an action item to look into that, because that will help people a lot, I think it's a great idea.
It would be really nice if we had like some kind of a concept drawing, it just.
Of the whole district, or just examples of buildings?
Just the samples of it, you know, just.
As a designer, and I think Damon is thinking the same thing, how are you going to prepare something that's, I mean, you get 78 different lots, it could be subdivided or it could be conglomerated, and there, you can have anywhere from one to three stories, it can be anywhere from 100 by 30 to 50 by 50?
Well, I was contemplating volunteering, but I was thinking about scope, number one, and also I wasn't sure that anyone cares what I think, so that was the other thing.
I mean, I, I think that theoretically, what you could do is you could just draw a non-contextual building that's the largest mass that meets the guidelines and say, if someone were to take a large parcel, this is, you know, something that they might be able to put there. And it's sort of an exercise in, in taking yourself and putting it in a vacuum, and just saying, we're not designing for the site, we're just designing based on the criteria. And it's sort of, you know, any town USA with these boundaries, we can do this. I think, is that kind of what you're talking about, Ken, just sort of a generic, this is, you know, this is what 38 feet looks like, this is what the glazing, this is what the architectural styles.
Right.
It's not on any specific.
This is what could happen, you could have this little thing here and this little thing here and this big thing in the middle.
Yeah, and it's not on any specific lot.
Yeah.
Here's a small, medium and large building, replicate them a couple of times and show them next to each other in any sort of different configuration.
So is that something you think you might be able to do, Dan?
Sure, I can try to put something together.
Campus is another thing that.
Because I think you have a great vision of what it's going to look like.
Well, but I think with the, with the variety of buildings, you could look at campus and say, you know, these are the things that you might see on it, and how they get laid out is going to be.
Yeah, I think that campus, I mean, most people have been to like a, some kind of camp, you know, college campus or office campus, but yeah, that would.
So you're looking for a good example and a bad example?
I think just good will be fine.
Just good? I thought you were looking for a devil's advocate one, too.
No, 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 well, no, I think what Ken was talking about was like, show what we're trying to avoid, like show things that our guidelines, our design guidelines, for example, have been crafted to avoid, you know, X.
Sure.
Well, it was recommended to try to think about it critically, too. Right, so when, when you are coming up, think of what could slip through the bylaws and potentially get in as a, as a by right.
Unintended consequence.
Unintended consequence, so, you know, when you're, when you're dreaming of what it could look like, you could, you know, also put a critical hat on, too.
Of course.
Also, we mentioned potentially seeing the development that was matching, you know, and could potentially be, I've taken upon myself to start a design like that, maximizing availability, such as I would for a client that came and.
Great.
I've got a breakdown, I counted it up, and there are 78 parcels with varying sizes. I have a question. There are three parcels that get their frontage in that area, but are cut out of the, the area. Would they be allowed to develop their parcel simply because they have frontage in the area?
I don't believe they would be able to develop the whole parcel.
This one here, that little.
Oh, this little silver is this frontage?
Yep, that little strip, that's how he gets there. This one here, that, 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 there's no lot line there. This one here, that, 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 there's no lot line there, so that's the frontage for this lot, and then the school, of course. So aside from those three.
Well, what it says is, where a district boundary line divides any lot laid out by deed or conveyance or shown on a duly recorded plan prior to the time such boundary line is established and in effect, the regulations applying to the less restricted portion of such lot may be considered as extending not more than 50 feet into the more restricted portion, provided however, that the lot has frontage on a street in the less restricted district. So, the village district would be less restricted than the residential district, so if it has frontage in the village district, you could go 50 feet into the residential district.
Which isn't very far.
No.
It's not, it's not gonna give them any opportunity to do anything there.
So, just on the topic of the, the meeting, so first of all, I think we need a word for this thing that's not a public hearing but is an engagement in the public to talk about these kind of things, I don't know what-
You can call it a listening session, you can call it a public discussion, you can call it a bylaw workshop with the public.
Okay.
I mean, if you're, if you're going to kind of call it whatever you want, because it's really, it's an open, legally, it's an open discussion within the meeting.
Cool. So, let's say, I'll just pick public discussion for now unless someone prefers another term. So I think, you know, like, we talked about having a public discussion for the, the scenic roads, for this one, I think what we've talked about and what we've, I think there's, first of all, this, this is a really big deal, this bylaw, and there's a lot in it, and there's a lot of, we could potentially get feedback about, I think it would behoove us to schedule a public discussion well in advance of when we need to do the public hearing, so that we can actually, so it's very clear to the public that we're there to have the discussion, leverage the input, and if we need to have a couple follow-up meetings to incorporate before we go to public hearing.
My understanding was we were gonna start public discussions next meeting.
Okay, no, so that's-
And have them next meeting, and then both meetings in February, with the intent that the public hearing would be the first meeting in March.
Okay, so-
And hopefully get all of the, shake all of the, the, this is wrong with the bylaw, this needs to be looked at, out in January and February, so that when March rolls around, it's, alright, we're ready to go, and if there's something that comes up, it's hopefully at least been talked about and there's a reasonable expectation that the board has either some support or backup for what they're doing, or has already changed that.
Great. So, that sounds great, so as far as making that clear on the agendas, those public discussions, you'll find a way to just, I don't know if it, maybe it's its own numbered section or whatever you think, but is there anything else besides the agenda that we can or should do to?
I think we're looking at doing a mailing to those within the district, I know that the bylaw affects everybody in town, I think that the people most likely to feel effects, whether ill or otherwise, from the implementation of this, are those that live within the boundaries. They will probably be the largest percentage of those who have comment, and I think that the chair has felt through this whole process that they should at a minimum be notified. If we could send one to everybody who lives in town, we would, it's just not a feasible thing. I am going to speak with local reporters about maybe putting some sort of blurb or mention of these in there.
Some kind of an article.
And have local cable put a scroll, put it in, in the scroll, so that if people like me sit at home and watch like local cable, they might get it and read it and say, hey, I got nothing to do on a Monday night, maybe I'll go down and do that. Or at least watch the first one. If, if we're on television and somebody's like, you know, it's cold, I don't want to go out, and they watch it and they're like, oh, well, that's crazy, I gotta go down there and tell these people what I think, maybe they'll come to the next one.
Okay, that sounds great, I mean, that sounds like, does anyone have any comment? It seems like, for me, that addresses our plan in terms of discussing and socializing this.
The sooner we can start talking about it with the public, the better.
I agree.
The more aware we can make people, the better, so. This is next, this is the January 26th, we're gonna talk about?
That would be our first one.
So if this selectman wouldn't mind announcing it at their meeting too, that'd be greatly appreciated.
An ad hoc should be good, because if we have the historical commission here to discuss, that, that ties those two pieces together too, because one is dependent upon the other.
That's a great point, yeah. All right, so now, if, I think that, I, I'll get to my comments, sorry, I'm not trying to be crafty here by moving much, I don't know, just tired, I guess. All right, so my comments are kind of in a similar vein to some of the things we've talked about already today. So, things I was thinking about, we talked, we were just talking about unintended consequences, and in the last meeting we had an exchange about special permit for single-family and two-family, we can bring this up to the public discussion, so we don't have to decide it now or whatever. I thought, the people in the board made some really good points about those being potential loopholes, which combined with the offset changes, could result in things that were really not within the spirit of the village district bylaw.
Okay.
Now, in the special permit guidelines, you did, you know, talk about, you did include, you know, special permit will prove conditional on being in the spirit of the special permit guidelines, so I guess my concern went to really driving home the point that, how to put it, so I, that these particular thing, having a lot of single-family and two-family housing was, in, in, you know, packing it in, you know, using either the campus or just the low, small offsets was not the goal, and so maybe we could, you know-
I think that's already pretty clearly addressed though, because we, we say if it's not in harmony with the purpose and intent of the bylaw.
Yeah, my cons, my concern is that over the years, like, it's totally clear to us, my concern is that over the years, the incompatibility of, you know, whatever, a, a lot of, a big, you know, field of 10-foot separated, single or two-story, or even, you know, three-story homes, that aren't mixed use and whatever, that people's understanding the specifics of what's in the spirit, not in the spirit, may, the memory may, institutional memory may fade, so that's why I'd like, for example-
Isn't that documented in the preamble and purpose?
I don't, I think in, in general, but I think, I think given the amount of impetus that there may be for someone to want to do something like that, I don't think it, I don't think it's really that, I don't think it's so clear about, I don't, I don't think it's clear enough, basically.
I think you underestimate the value of commercial property in a village district, and the, the value that somebody can get for commercial property as opposed to residential property from a, from a construction standpoint.
Okay.
If, if somebody's gonna buy a large parcel and put a campus in-
Yep.
If they're buying into a district where commercial's starting to happen, that's a, it's a more valuable use, they're getting more per square foot for the commercial than they are for residential, and that's, again, all predicated on the district taking off.
And that's my concern.
And I guess-
In a stagnant period, you worry about someone jumping in there, you know what I mean?
Well, I, I, I think that-
So I, I guess, just to jump in, I mean, what I'm thinking is basically just put in a clause that says, indicates that special permits for these uses will be, only be granted for something like structures existing at the time of the adoption of the bylaw. So really, why do we have that in there? Protection of existing structures and existing owners and their uses.
And so- But I don't think that's why that's in there, because the existing owners and, and structures and uses are already protected by 40A, pre-existing non-conforming. So the, the special permit would be for the construction of new dwelling units.
Okay, so you, so regarding, so if that's the case, I don't know, maybe, maybe we even want to consider striking the use as was proposed last meeting, I guess.
And, and that's fine, I mean, if-
I guess my concern with the, you said there's protection, but the 40A, you talked about cases where if like the use, the active use lapses for two years and this kind of-
That's, yes, that's a ban, that's an abandonment, but that, I mean, if, if you're having structures that are abandoned for more than two years losing their use, I would be surprised that people would be building new residential structures at the same time.
Okay.
And maybe that's just-
Well, it's just, here's, let me give you a scenario. Someone passes away, the estate takes a while to sort, sort itself out, the house is on a, a lot that can accommodate more structures. Or whatever, I guess we're talking about the case where it would lapse, I, I think especially in cases where you have inheritance and people passing away, that's where, that's the case I've seen where you're most likely to get temporary abandonment. So, anyways, but I, I think Matt and Ken had talked about locking that, you know, eliminating the special permit. Out, my concern was really, was really, you know, loopholes in 40A. I do share their concern about that being a, a sort of loophole that could allow abuse of some of the things that we're doing, very positive things we're doing to support, you know, the development of preamble. And, and to Ken's point, yeah, hopefully it is clear down the road, I guess, I just had a concern that, you know, I know I read things in the bylaws so now that might be, might have, would probably be really clear, like, when they were written, and sometimes, you know, it takes me a while to really kind of understand where they were going with stuff. You know, we just talked about the bonding for Emerald Place now, maybe that was just an afterthought that someone threw in there, maybe they had a real specific reason they wanted that bonding, we came to discuss it, and we had a really confused conversation, and I don't think anyone could say definitively what the bonding was for. So that's my concern about the, either get rid of it or clarify it.
Sure.
Because of the institutional memory problem. Regarding campuses, so I was thinking about the campuses as well, kind of in a similar vein. Early in the process, and I'm gonna be a real waffler here, when, I think, I think the campuses are a great feature of this, this bylaw, so I, I'm excited, very excited about them. The state model has some, what I recall as being very, maybe overly specific constraints regarding what the required use percentage breakdowns were for campuses. In retrospect, I'm thinking, we have no kind of use restrictions, it's assumed that anything that could be cited in the district could be cited in some combination on the campus. And I guess my concern was, again, to avoid this loophole regarding, you know, just campus for massive residential kind of thing, maybe we should have some kind of mixed, some kind of use percentage requirements, maybe not as elaborate as what's in the state model, but I think it would be worth a second look, and especially, at least a, a split between, you know, require it to be split between residential and something else. What else, I guess the only two other uses in the district are commercial and civic. Commercial makes total sense, civic is great, my concern is that there are some civic uses, civic is so broad that, you know, if they put in a fountain in the middle or whatever they would say, you know, that's-
Yeah.
Uh, so, so that's where I think we might want to review that, maybe Adam, if you want to make a proposal on that, look at the state model, think about it, whatever, but what do you guys think, are you, do you, do you share that concern, what's the, what?
Well, yeah, so, my understanding is you're, so you're trying to protect against a future planning board that comes in and is like super proponent of just, say, lots of little houses in a, in a district, because all of this has to go through a development plan review, so you're saying if, if they could come in, they could present a campus development that's a bunch of little houses, and some future planning board could potentially approve that, and you want something in here to prevent that from happening, because that's not what the intent is.
So, just to clarify, so the, the little houses thing is the first, has to do with that special permit thing I talked about before, similar to that but a little bit different. In this case, I think campus is a great vehicle, but I think we, we may want to consider requiring that campuses be mixed use, and even if, like, like, I think we allow, I don't know if it's by, by special permit, we allow multifamily, like four or five family, which I, I think is good, we're trying to increase the density, I mean, there's gonna be cases probably where, you know, it might, it may make sense to approve apartment buildings as part of the district, you know, as part of the civicscape of the district, but I don't know that for the campus, we want-
Yeah, I, I think what Nathan's getting at is, there was a breakdown that, in the special permit section of the state bylaw, that sort of mirrors the campus that we've crafted.
That has criteria, this percentage of this, this percentage of that.
Yes, and, and I think he's, he wants to reinsert something to that effect, and I'll tell you, without coming up with language off the top of my head, I think what I would probably say is, a building with multiple uses in a campus setting, or any campus setting shall not have more than 25% of first floor uses occupied residentially, and no more than-
Right.
Yeah, yeah, that kind of-
No more than, you know, 50% shall be office use, and there should be retail component mix in, something to that effect, I think, is that kind of what you're-
That's, yeah, you got it, yep.
So, along that same line, should, should we clarify that in the actual purpose of this document as well, where, because throughout the document, we're implying mixed use, but in the documentation of our purpose, they actually don't say that.
Allow for a mix of new land uses that are appropriate to both the needs of the community and the scale of the surrounding neighborhoods.
All we're saying is needs of the community, scale of surrounding neighborhoods, nothing about mixed usage. Right?
Yeah, I think that adding mixed use is not inappropriate.
The needs of the community and surrounding neighborhood is lots of little houses, right? And there's nothing in here to imply that there's anything other than that, so it just, we might want to throw that in, because I, I thought it was covered and clear, and it is with, if you go through what's allowable by right, without requiring a special permit, but-
But it doesn't reflect in the purpose.
Again, if, if someone's going for a special permit, you want to understand the purpose of the bylaw, so that the, so that some future board can say, well, that's not really in the spirit of what we were looking for.
No, I think that's a, a good comment.
Yeah, I agree, and I'm looking at that C, allow a mix of land uses, like before-
But not encourage.
Yeah, B is encourage, C maybe, yeah, exactly.
So we're looking at maybe an F that says, encourage mixed-use development that facilitates community civic, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah.
Language, language, happy language.
Or just change C to, from allow to encourage, I don't know if that-
Yeah, C is pretty close if you start to mess with the, with the allow there. I agree with Damon.
I mean, I can, I can mess with C or I can-
I would, I think I would add a D.
Add an F.
Either way.
I think, I think C is still ambiguous.
Well, I'll, I'll throw a pitch with F and we'll see where we land.
Sure.
Okay.
Sounds beautiful.
Fantastic.
All right, I'd like to tell you, I'm done, but I'm not.
I know, I read your email.
Okay. All right, so that was the campus. All right. I'm gonna skip to my last one, then come back. So, just throwing this out there, we have some striking, beautiful, inspiring, ancient trees in our village district, and, well, I don't think they're, you know, can't be brought down for any reason, obviously there's a time and a place where a tree's gonna come down. I just, we've, it's sometimes talked about having a tree bylaw, I don't know that we have it, what our tree bylaws are like right now.
Are we talking trees on private property or street trees?
It's a good question, so I'm trying to think of what the right of way is, I don't know, I'm just throwing the issue out there.
If you figure the right of way is 50 feet, pavement-
50 feet from center line?
No, 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 50 feet total, so 25 feet from center line.
Okay.
Ballpark, I mean-
Okay.
My guess is that there's very few roads that you'll come across where center line is, center line of the road is actual center line of the right of way, but-
Okay. Yeah, I think we're really talking about things near the streetscape, and there's certainly, you don't want anything draconian, I think it's just like, even just a reporting process that can allow for feedback, you know, or whatever, the, the point is, you know, so we, we have this thing, we're decreasing the offsets, there's gonna be some construction. Valuable construction, just, you know, I think just even having a statement to encourage the retention of some of these, I think, like, when I, when I picture, it's hard for me to picture, you know, outside of my house on Main Street without thinking about some of the, the gorgeous old trees, and it's, they have their time, at some point they gotta come down, they get old, they're, you know, they're crashing down, but I guess, you know, avoidable removal, I think they, they add something to the-
Yeah, I think that everything that's in there is going through a development plan review.
That's a good point. Okay, yeah.
And, and I think that that's really kind of where you can address that, because while you can't tell them, no, you can't do that use because it's by right, you can say, you can't do it in that manner. And I mean, we can add something in here about preservation, into the design guidelines, preservation of-
Yeah.
Historic or, you know, safe, appropriate trees, that kind, you know.
Yeah.
What people will say is, oh, it's dead, I had to cut it down.
Yeah.
And sometimes that's true. Sometimes it may not be.
Yeah, and so I don't even know if, you know, if it's something we want to, like, in designs guidelines here, it might be a place, but, and I don't even know if, you know, with a lot of the design guidelines, I think it's important that we have teeth that, you know, we can enforce. With this one, I think, for me, it may be just enough to express a-
Desire to keep it.
Yeah, exactly. I don't know, do anyone else have any thoughts about that?
Yeah, I try to, I sympathize what you're trying to do, and I'm trying to think of a better, a realistic way to incorporate it. I mean, even when a normal development happens, usually the owner clears the property before they even come in here and talk to us, like, it's the first thing they do. So having, I mean, tree removal permits or whatever would be, I don't know how that works, but I think it might be valuable.
I don't have any input on that one.
I've already expressed an opinion on the clearcutting of lots before they come to planning or ZBA. I think it's inappropriate, but private property, they can, they can clearcut it. I don't agree with it, but that's what happens.
So, I don't know, so if we were to have something with like requiring permits on trees within, you know, within some-
Would that fall into the historic thing too?
The architectural district.
The architectural preservation district steps away from landscaping.
All right.
Intentionally as to give a teeth in other ways. So in exchange for, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna look seriously at additions and substantial changes to the exterior, we're gonna kind of say, if you want to plant crazy flowers, we're gonna kind of, you know, some local historic districts will specify, you can only do these certain sorts of plantings. And I think that that's, that's where people really start to get a bad taste in their mouth. I mean, I can look at some tree stuff, I think that-
If it's-
I think that it's hard to restrict the removal of trees on private property. I think that really, I think it sticks in people's craw for a variety of reasons.
Yep.
Street trees, people are not always happy about it, but sometimes they're willing to soften their position a little bit if it's directly on the street.
Yep.
You know, once you get 10, 15 feet into the yard, it's a whole different story.
Okay. So maybe we should just do something with street trees, do something with street trees then, that might be-
How big of a problem do we have with street trees? I mean, how many street trees meet the criteria that you're talking about?
If you're gonna jeopardize-
I think of the nice trees in town, I don't think most of them are, I mean, in the center that I'm thinking of, I'm not thinking of a whole lot that are street trees.
Yeah. Lancaster Ave, Lemons Road Ave.
That close, yeah.
I don't think they fall in the right of way though. They had some big trees around the street, but I don't think they're actually within the right of way.
Right, so then they'd be on the property, right, so?
Main Street has some in parts of it. But again, I don't think it's worth jeopardizing, you know, passing the bylaw.
And I think that, you know, really, you can address it at the development plan review. Because if there's a tree that really creates a character-
Yep.
-of a lot, that's a big part of what the development plan review looks at.
Okay, yeah. So that's a good discussion. That makes, that makes sense. Last thing is our 60% glazing requirement. So, long story short, I know, Ken, I know, consciously you're not being too repetitive here, because I know I brought this up last meeting. This is one where I was wondering if Adam could put something together, because what I recall, I'm not an architect, last I dealt with glazing requirements, 60% is pretty high, like- When you start looking at structures, and especially if you're looking at the entire, you know, envelope, excluding the roof, what seems like a building with a lot of windows, you're often talking well under 40% glazing, because there's space, vertical space between the windows, there's horizontal space between the windows, sometimes there's shutters. And so, I guess, I mean, you can, I can forward out what I wrote in my email to you.
Yeah.
But-
And I can forward it along too. I started looking for this. It's not as easy to find as I kind of hoped it would be.
I can, if I had more time, I'd go out and photo some, photo my own house and like, you know, my, my house, the Colonial, has like nine windows and a door in the front. I bet you that front face is maybe 40% glazing. And then, the north facing has one window. You get the idea. You go around the back, it's less, you go inside, it's less. So the house as a whole, you know, you wouldn't look at it and say, wow, that house has no windows. You look at it, you think, actually, well, it's got a lot of windows. But it's probably about 20 to 30%.
Well, this is only for non-residential.
Yeah. It's only for non-residential?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I thought it was for everything in the village.
Non-residential use.
Oh.
So storefronts, shop fronts.
Office fronts, that kind of stuff.
Restaurant fronts, cafe fronts.
But we're also discouraging residential use on the first floor.
Right.
Correct.
Yeah.
And then, and then to go further, the definitions. Oh, Ben, breakfast, I'm sorry.
Well, I didn't, I missed that, I apologize. That makes a difference.
My, my understanding of this, and maybe we should clarify the wording, is that if we have a mixed-use building facade, then the lower use, which is non-residential, should be at least 60% glazed, and then the upper can do whatever it wants to be because it's residential.
I would already read it that way, but if, I don't know, you can clarify it if you want.
But Nathan didn't read it that way.
Well, maybe Nathan didn't read it closely enough too. I guess, I still want, so I think that's great. I mean, I wonder if we want to restrict that to first floor requirement, and the rest just be consistent with the district. Because like, if you have like, there's some office uses where, I don't know if, you know, if you have an office on a second floor.
So sort of non-residential first floor uses?
So, okay, I would go for that, because I was thinking first floor when we talked about this. Because I think of like the shop front, the cafe front, you want that to be-
Yeah, the ones that you kind of, you want to, you want to create the indoor/outdoor
Exactly.
Connection.
So yeah, maybe just add the, a first floor term in there someplace.
I can get on board with that.
Newly built, newly constructed building facades for non-residential first floor uses shall have a transparency at least 60%.
The, the first floor shall have a transparency of at least 60%.
And will that be interpreted to like if the building has a front and a back, like that they, that's just for that front face? They don't have to have the sides and the back be like that as well?
Or should the whole front-
It depends.
Like if the, okay.
If you're on a campus and you have uses and access to the building from four sides, wouldn't it stand to reason that you'd want all four sides to have that same-
Sure, for sides that have that kind of access, I'm thinking like, picture like downtown here, right? There's a lot of those buildings, beautiful front, storefront, and then in the back, it's kind of like parking, there's an entrance/exit thing, and you're not going to do six, there's reasons why you wouldn't want it-
I'll play around with it and come up with something.
Yeah, it'd be, it's the facing, right? Well, isn't that what facade means?
The ones that, yeah, kind of public facing, yeah. All right, that's, thanks for bearing with me there. That's, that's my feedback. Anything else on village district that we should cover before, tonight, before our next meeting?
No, I think we're good.
Any, any public comment regarding village district?
My name's Mary Ellen Ramsdell, 44 Cartland. I've been listening to all your meetings on this village district bylaw, and the one thing that concerns me is, no citizens are at the meetings here. And how to get this information out to the citizens? Now, I understand that, because I do not live in the village by district, you know, it doesn't affect me per se, but it really does affect me. I might shop there, you know, I go through there a couple times a day. And so I think the public in the town needs to really be notified. Now, one of the ways I, I know we do in our little community, and that's about 100 people, is I come to the meetings and I take this information back. Now, why not put some of this onto a website so we can see it? And the map also on the website so we can see it? And I'm also wondering, is there a way that citizens, because if they can't come to the meetings, you're talking about March 3rd, is it a warrant to have everything in for a warrant? That's seven weeks away. And that's not a lot of time for discussion, for public discussion. So I'm wondering, can people, is there a means for the town to, you know, can they send a question in to you? Is there some means that we could do that?
Yeah, it's March 23rd is when the war closes.
March 23rd, okay.
Anybody who wishes can submit questions or issues to the board. You can send them to me in writing.
Okay.
I'll present them to the board. We're working to have all of our meetings televised.
Right.
So that's giving people some access in that way. And that's why we're trying to have the listening sessions over three meetings, to allow people, you know, maybe you can't come on the 26th, maybe you can come the first meeting in February.
Right.
Or vice versa. But yeah, we're, if somebody wants to stop by and ask a question, send an email, call the office, I'd be happy to answer anything I can.
Okay, can you also put this on the website?
Yes.
Under your, would it be under your director's page then?
Uh, I still haven't figured out the website, but it will be up there.
Okay, because that's a really great spot, if that, you know, if you could put everything that's discussed here onto your director's page, that allows us to look at it.
Every, you mean, well, what I would put up would be the final draft of the bylaw.
Right, the draft and the map.
Yes.
The map is important. Because the citizens don't know what's going on. I mean, no one is here at these meetings.
It's a good point. So we're scheduling three, with this as like a highlighted agenda item. One thing, Adam, I know social media stuff is a little tough. This might, School Billing Committee has a Facebook page for the school billing product. This might be worth, if you could run it by Carrie, craft an agreement with her, so you're gonna own the site, there's gonna be, we're not gonna, board members won't engage on it, it's more gonna be, we'll post things from meetings and we'll, you know, people can post, I don't know, if you have some thoughts about that?
I'm squirrely about Facebook.
Well, I'm not sure you can do it legally on Facebook, because it's a town.
You can do, there's so much, you can have a, an official town Facebook, but you essentially have to have a full-time person monitoring it to ensure, I mean, you don't have to, that's not the legal requirement, but the things that can't go on there are so easy to put up and it's a, monitoring a, an official government Facebook is not-
Okay.
Not a simple process.
Yeah, I mean, so, so School Billing Committee has done it, I think they've, now maybe they have someone who's dedicating a significant amount of time to that. It might be worth looking into the model and also looking into the results they're getting to see if it's worth the investment.
Mm-hmm.
But I think from an accessibility standpoint, it allows-
More transparency, right.
Exactly, it's transparent and people, a lot of people are very comfortable with that medium, and they're very comfortable distributing, you know, they use the Facebook mechanisms to tell their friends about it and that kind of stuff.
One other thing, I know I was at the Selectments Meeting the other night, and they were talking about having both the architectural bylaw and the district bylaw together, in the warrant as one. So will the, the architectural bylaw be on your Facebook or on your director's page also? Is that something that would be?
Yes, when, when I complete the draft, based on the, the comments from the historical commission, they won't be one warrant article. They'll be linked. So one, the architectural preservation district would be Article X and-
Okay, I thought they were-
The village would be X plus one.
Okay, all right, all right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
On the issue of public input, you mentioned you're gonna have three discussions. Does that, do those three discussions incorporate the public meeting or the public hearing? Or is that, so when do you anticipate having the public hearing?
First meeting in March. So that would be, so we'd have the three sessions and then the fourth meeting would be the public hearing.
Okay, and the deadline for the warrant articles is March 23rd? So in the event that after the public meeting you needed to make revisions, you would do that prior to the 23rd?
Correct.
Okay.
And hopefully with three public meetings, our hope is to get most of the feedback and revisions. I mean, the, the thing about public hearings, as you know, is you have them and there's a sense of finality and it's harder to make revisions after the public hearing. So our hope is that by having three preceding public meetings, that'll give us ample opportunity to, you know, get input, incorporate, discuss input, incorporate input, so that when we go to that public hearing, we got something that, you know, really reflects, you know, the town discussion.
Right, right. Yeah, as was mentioned, I mean, in order to get valuable feedback, people need to be able to see it and read it and comprehend it. The meeting on the 20, I think it's the 26th is your next meeting. Do you have a specific time for this agenda item? Because if people are gonna be coming to hear this discussion, it just might be something to think about, is giving a specific time?
We don't currently, I, the 26th, no, the 9th, we have Highfield. We could do it at 6:35.
Yeah, I think if people are coming.
Or maybe 7 o'clock or something.
Yeah.
We also have the review of the architectural.
Correct. I assume that people, if they're interested in the village district, would also be interested in that.
Yeah, so I would suggest we get Highfield out of the, what?
Well, Highfield's February.
Oh, it's February, okay. So this is the only thing for, plus regular business?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, put it at 7 and hopefully we can, you know, get through our regular business pretty-
I think that you should be able to.
Okay, good, good comments. Anything else before we wrap up? Alrighty, anything from the board? Any board comment?
Yeah, a comment. The, the posting on the town calendar for meetings has been indicated at the bare minimum required. And I'd just like to say again, to bolster and increase public involvement, would be a good idea to have a placeholder for every time we're gonna meet, every time we're planned to meet, every, every date that's on this meeting schedule, there should be indication of a planning board meeting, whether or not there's an agenda there. I've seen other towns that do this, they just, they put it there, you go to that and there's, there's no agenda, but it at least lets people know that there is a meeting. I mean, I've gone, I regularly go there the week before, like on a Wednesday, and there's nothing for the Monday meeting that we've got coming up. And, and honestly, a month out, there's almost nothing in the entire town.
The town clerk runs the town calendar, so they, my understanding, is generally won't place an item on the calendar unless they have agenda in hand. We wait till the 48-hour minimum to post agendas in order to facilitate getting everything in, and not continue to post revised agendas over and over.
Yeah, so I think what Matthew's asking though is, can we get the-
Yeah, I can speak to her about it.
Get the events up there, even though the agenda isn't formalized yet, and you could just post them in advance and say, agenda forthcoming, and then you still have the 48 hours, you can update the agenda.
Sure. And I guess what I'm saying is, I'm happy to have the conversation. It's, my understanding is she controls access to that calendar. So, being that she operates in her own little elected sphere, if she decides that that's not something that's worth doing, or that they're interested in doing, I don't know how, I mean, I can, I can certainly push it, I just, it's not something I have direct control over.
All right, anything else today? Any other board comment?
I think you skipped the meeting schedule.
Oh, the meeting schedule. Okay, so we have a, thank you, Ken. We have a meeting coming up on January 26th at 6:30. And as we discussed on that, will be the, among the other items will be the architectural district bylaw and public discussion of the village district bylaw. So it'll be joint meeting on the architectural, and then public discussion of village district. And February 9th, we have the Highfield Village Hearing and another public discussion on the village district bylaw and, and the architectural district bylaw as well. And February 23rd, we have, right now, the only thing we know is on the agenda will be the village district bylaw and architectural district bylaw. And those are the upcoming meetings that we're aware of. And those are the upcoming meetings that we're aware of. Any other member issues?
Um, well, I, I'd like to know that we're definitely going to have the material that's required for the Highfield Village Hearing in, in a decent amount of time, like hopefully before the Thursday prior to, I mean, Thursday prior to it is, is the minimum, right? If we don't have the material for the Monday hearing on Thursday, I mean, it's kind of...
He's not going to be able to model it in Infoworks if you don't get it to him earlier.
This, this project has been a nine-year waste, a lot of time.
Yeah, we talked about getting the information Thursday before, is that just an administrative thing or is that something that has...
Yes, I, I'll, I'll check in with the project engineer and our review engineer and see where they are with the project and when the project engineer expects to submit the revised plans.
That's just how you just make that rule, I mean, is it just internally, you put out...
Yeah, I mean, the board has stated that they have a policy.
Okay.
I believe it was at that, the original Highfield hearing back, was it November?
Okay.
The board said that they, everybody agreed and voted that they wanted to have the material ahead of time, so...
Just wanted to make sure, was there anything else we had to do?
No, it's just a matter of me informing the applicants that they need to have the material in in that time or the board won't, won't hear new, newly submitted information.
Okay, great.
Let me just reinforce that the planning office has been functioning at a very high level and that was no way a comment indicating any problem there.
No, I, I don't think it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other board comment?
All set.
All right, I'm all set as well. All right, so, so with that, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye.